Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 14th, 2017 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is called to order. Our meeting is being recorded and live aired, aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording our meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello there. First correspondence, we have an emailed letter from Rosaria Pepper dated January 23rd, 2017 regarding submission of the SOIs for the middle schools. Thank you very much to Rosaria. You wrote a wonderful email to the Select Board, Town Manager, and the School Committee making some excellent points in support of our submission of the SOI to the Select Board. So we thank you for that. And for every, to everybody who's written letters in support of the SOIs, we're very grateful for your support. We also have an emailed letter from Donald Jarvis CTEC regarding their Student of the Month for January 2017. The Long Meadow students recognized are Nancy Lee for Information Support Services and Networking One and Mason Salvatore. This says Brush Hill Academy. Do you know what the recognition? We didn't, I'm not sure what the rec-
It was her preschool.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see. Okay. We have three-minute approvals on our agenda tonight. So if somebody could just make the motions, get a motion second, we can go through those.
All right. I move on the School Committee, approve the minutes of January 23rd, 2017 School Committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Any discussion or changes on the minutes for January 23rd, 2017? Seeing none, Russ?
It was. It was. On item eight, under recess discussion, it was just missing a word. So it's right above community preservation application.
Dan, do you have that okay?
I would've told you earlier, but I was.
For the, yeah, the 23rd. Are you looking at 24? The motion's for the 23rd.
Oh, the first one is 24.
So do you want to wait?
It should say the 23rd and a joint meeting, how the 24th?
Yeah, it was a joint meeting and then, and then our regular meeting?
Joint meeting.
Yeah, we met that Monday and Tuesday.
I don't have.
Does anyone have any on the 23rd, anything? Okay?
Do we even have those minutes?
I don't know that we have any.
All I have is the 24th.
This is the 23rd.
Meeting, it says January 9th, which is the wrong date. It said January 9th.
Oh, yeah, this one. It does say January 9th.
I know, I'm not sure why I said that, but it's close to the 23rd.
Oh, January 9th.
We can hold off on approving this if people haven't seen this document. This is the, these are the minutes from the joint meeting with the Select Board?
No, I did have that. I just thought that was January 9th, that's why I was.
Yeah.
But yes.
The date is wrong, so the, that's the reason we recommended.
So that one I thought was fine, it was actually the 24th, it was.
So do we send, we need to submit the date change to them on that? Does anyone else have any other input on the joint meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, moving on to.
I move the School Committee, approve the minutes to the January 24th, 2017 School Committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Okay, so that.
So Russ.
So if you look in number eight, right above community preservation application, it's the paragraph that starts, Ms. Allen. And it's just missing a word there. He stressed he did not want to brush an idea. The word want is missing. Let's. Feel like good other than that.
Anything else on the 24th? Okay, all those in favor with Russ's changes?
And then last, I move the School Committee, approve the minutes to the February 7th, 2017 School Committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Anything on the February 7th minutes? All the, Russ?
I was just gonna vote.
All those in favor? Do we have any School Committee announcements tonight? John?
Yeah. I'm taking this opportunity to announce that I will not be running for another term on the Long Meadow School Committee. I've served for nine years and I've found the experience to be both challenging and satisfying. I particularly like the fact that I was able to help facilitate the development and construction of the new high school by virtue of my work with a talented group of concerned citizens from throughout the town. Our new state-of-the-art high school building is a monument to the value that we, as Long Meadow citizens, place on education. The work of the School Committee over the years has helped to create a school system that is far superior to what I joined when I first came to work in the Long Meadow Public Schools back in 1971. In the year 2017, Long Meadow Public Schools rank among the top school systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We are in the top ranks nationally as well. It is my hope that this early public announcement will enable others to consider making a decision to run for a seat on the School Committee and continue the tradition of maintaining and supporting quality schools for our children and for our community. Thank you.
Russ?
I just want to thank you for all the years of service. I think I've only done this a couple of years. I don't know how you've done it, nine years, but it's, it's a lot of work. I know you're volunteering and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I echo what Russ said. Really appreciate all of your work on the School Committee. I think it's really unique to have a former teacher on the School Committee and very valuable, your, your input and your perspective has just been a wonderful addition to the School Committee and I really enjoy working with you.
I know. Well, I'll still be working here for a couple more months.
Yeah, I'm glad. I wish you'd be here next year too.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Thank you. I'm going to move the IAQ report up to the business with guests category, which is an oversight. I should've moved it up to begin with, so it's item number, actually it's the second item under ongoing business. All it says is indoor air quality discussion, Williams and Glenbrook Middle Schools. And Dan McCarthy has taken precious time out of his evening to join us tonight. Thank you so much, Dan, for being here.
Good question.
Really appreciate it. It's good to see you. How would we like to start superintendent?
Sure, I'll give you a brief intro. So we had furnished you with a draft, which we're now calling working document around some action steps that we'd like to take in the immediate future with regard to indoor air quality. The, the approach here with this document was to identify some steps that we could take with existing staffing, mostly with existing resources, although there's a couple of exceptions to that, sort of within existing capacity, understanding that there are some systemic issues that kind of go beyond what we can immediately address. And so I want to thank Dan McCarthy, our Facilities Director, Tom Mazza, Assistant Superintendent, two principals, Beverly Hershorn, our Public Health Director, for sitting with us to develop some actionable ways that we can improve air quality and ensure that we have the best environmental health conditions possible at our two middle schools. And this came, as you know, in response to the report that was provided by Walt Benziger to the School Committee, but also some reports that had been in place even prior to Walt's report. So you have in front of you some action steps. They relate to really three things. One, our efforts to ensure that we have adequate, clear, clean air exchange. That was one of the findings in Walt Benziger's report, concern about CO2 levels. The second area relates to ensuring that we have classrooms that are free from particulates, from dust. Basically, we'll get involved in a, in a deep cleaning over the next couple of months, taking advantage of the school vacation periods that are in front of us. And then also to sure, ensure that we are working to address visible sources of mold and perhaps identify for you some recommendations on some additional testing that could be done in the future. Again, understanding that there are limits to what we can immediately do and there's certainly aspects of this issue that, you know, the town should be engaged in and perhaps responsible for. So I won't go through all the steps. They're there for you. I hope you had it in enough time to take a look at some of the action steps that we are recommending and we'll leave it at that, but I'm happy to go through it on a step-by-step basis, if you like. But I think we're here to answer your questions and clarify any, any of the steps that we've listed here.
And before we dive into the document, I want to also thank the group that met and all the work that went into creating this document. I think it looks like a really great start and it's very thoughtful. It's also very responsive to the report that was generated and I appreciate that, the details involved. Does anyone have any questions to start out?
I have just a general question. Will this be put online, on the, in the online packets? Do you know?
In your online packet?
Yes.
In the School Committee packets? Yes.
Okay. Because that's what I work off of and I just want to make sure that this, all this stuff ends up in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Russ?
So based on our conversation last meeting, how's the Department of Public Health going to be involved in this, if at all?
So Beverly was involved in the development of this action plan and I think in terms of identifying, you know, any additional testing, I think we would want to kind of tap into her expertise. And then I think she'll be hopefully advising the town on where we stand with this and what the action steps are and what the testing is that may, perhaps is in front of us. But I'm open to your suggestions if there's, if there's kind of, if you have any thoughts or ideas on how we should work with her or other town officials on this, you know, we're all ears.
I, yeah, that makes sense. I think this looks like a good plan myself. I think the question is, well, how are parents, unless we read through this tonight, should we just put it on the website so they can have an idea of what the plan is internally? Because I know we're going to get questions about it. So how do we want to try and answer those questions without reading this whole thing right now?
All right. I'd be happy to send out to the parents a version of this perhaps.
Okay.
And I could do that as early as tomorrow or this week, but again, I wanted to sort of give the School Committee the first opportunity to review it before we-
Yeah.
-sent it out on a wider basis. But I think that's a great idea, we'll get it out.
Can I?
Oh, Stephanie, go ahead.
So Beverly Hershorn was involved in this. To what extent did she look at the report? How much of a part, a role in the actual action steps did she take? Did she?
So maybe Dan and Tom can jump in as well, but she's read the, the most recent report. She was comfortable with the steps that we're taking here. There wasn't, I'd say, any immediate action steps that she was recommending that aren't reflected here. But I suppose we would want to continue to kind of invite her back in as we're kind of working through this plan to kind of do a check-in with her. But again, if there's other ways you'd like us to engage her, you know, or work with her on this, then that's, that's, we'd love to hear about that.
I think the one thing that I have, I'm wondering about is when you talk about the upholstery and carpet cleaning, because the upholstery on those chairs is falling apart to such an extent.
At Williams?
At Williams. Is that what it's referring to?
We were thinking both auditoriums in terms of the upholstery.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, Dan or Tom, if that would be something, so Dan had started to-
Correct. I reached out to a contractor, get a price to what it would take to do the chairs and I have a budget number right now to look at. He isn't, he, he has not visited the site yet. We're just talking number of chairs, you know, the seats in the backs. They are old. There's not a lot of fiber per se. It's almost like a, it's, it's not a mat per se in there, so there wouldn't be a problem really. You're just going to be cleaning the surface a lot.
Just the cer, yeah. It just seems like some of those would fall apart and then you may have a bigger mess on your hands.
You might not be wrong on a couple of them, but for the most part, I think we'll get them, majority of them cleaned.
Yeah, I'm wondering whether it's a good idea, this is more of a rhetorical question, you know, if it's even a good idea to clean those? Because they might end up absorbing so much moisture because of the foam that's behind them.
There's not a lot of foam in there. I actually saw one apart the other day. It's more of like a weave, almost like a fiberglass weave in there. It's not really a lot of foam.
So you think it'll dry adequately?
I will, before we start, I have the vendor, I'm sure will, we're not causing him harm.
So who comes in and does that? Are we talking about another vendor coming in?
Correct.
Okay. And someone who specializes in that or?
Right.
Can we talk about who the sub is for that?
For the time, we may not want to do that because we, it may be something where we have to go out and get some-
Bids?
Some bids, some price information, so.
I have a suggestion when we, when you guys do that for a company.
Okay. Oh, wait, should I just call a company and get a budget number?
How much was it?
It's like $3 a chair.
And how many chairs?
I think it's like 400 each auditorium, somewhere in there, so.
Okay, so 2,400.
Question. Are there any standards for parts per million of particulate matter in, in air? And how much methane or CO2 or even carbon monoxide?
I think carbon dioxide, there was a threshold of 600 is a benchmark they're looking at.
It has to be below 800, but ideally like closer to 600 on?
Right. Well, is there some way of measuring that in all of these buildings? And maybe keeping maintenance, maintaining that measurement?
That was item, I think, three. We're looking to purchase a few of those on there. I did purchase one portable carbon dioxide. It measures temperature, relative humidity, carbon dioxide. It'll take a sample every 15 minutes, then I can download it and chart it.
Oh, that's great. It does all three?
Correct.
That's excellent.
So, but if, you know, you do a classroom, when you, if you just do a snapshot, you never really get the whole picture. So, well, I think what you're going to find in some of these classrooms is during the day or beginning of the day, it's low, but as we start loading them up, loading them up, we don't get the exchange, you'll start getting a higher rate. End of the day, when the kids are gone, the exchanges are still working, you'll dilute the area. And that's what I think we're going to be finding.
So you think it's better, you think that it's more cost-effective to buy the indoor air quality monitor that does the temperature, relative humidity, and carbon dioxide rather than getting the carbon dioxide monitor and the hy, is it hydro or hygrometer?
Hydrometer.
Hydrometer, yeah.
Same thing.
Okay.
So that would, those two would, yeah, because they're, those are already part of what the
machine does, right? Do you think it's preferred and more cost-effective?
Yeah, I mean, also, it's, part of indoor air quality too is also temperature. So I mean, it'll show you that, you know, either valves are holding or not holding, overheating your classrooms and such like that, so.
Okay.
You'll be, your teachers will be able, we'll listen to your teachers at the same time.
What'd you say?
You'll be listening to the teachers.
Yes.
As they say, you're overheating my room, my room's too cold.
Yes.
You'll obviously see right there what's happening.
That's, that's great.
So the, perhaps for anyone watching at home, to underscore what Dan's talking about, we're recommending that we purchase approximately 10 of these indoor air quality monitoring devices and they would measure the things that Dan talked about. I think we had about 10 of these. It would, would help us kind of identify those areas where we need better air exchange or where we have humidity issues that could, you know, potentially create mold conditions or mold-growing conditions. So I think if we have a better capacity to monitor and measure, I think that'll put Dan's team in a better position to address conditions on a, on a location by location, wing by wing, classroom by classroom basis. So it might be, if, if the committee sees this as reasonable, you could perhaps take a vote tonight to allocate the funds to allow us to make that purchase and that, and perhaps also to provide a budgetary allocation for some upholstery and carpet cleaning as well. So again, that's just thrown out there for discussion.
Where would, where would the 10 be? There would be one at each school and then, what were you thinking? Each school would have more than one? Some schools would have more than one?
Well, I mean, you have 27, 30, 30 classrooms per se and you, I would leave one in for at least a week in each classroom. So if you did one, it'd take a while to get through the building. You have multiple, you get through a building.
Got it. So you think it's not too much to do the 10 if we have six schools? Is that right? One, two, three, four, five, six schools? If we had one at each school?
I was just going to start with the middle schools because honestly, the high school is so high-tech right now, I don't think we have a problem there with all your new exchanges and such like that. So then you, now you're down to the other schools. Your two middle schools, what we looked at and had your-
So like five at each building?
A couple like that, maybe four and try a couple of those, but I'd like to start with the other middle schools, see where we stand, come up with an action plan to find out what ventilators aren't working or what should we do to correct the action. Or we might be happily surprised if I know we're not, have got the problem or we're getting a very minor problem.
I just think if we're going to purchase them, we might as well purchase a few extras for the other schools to have on hand, because I think it's, it's good for them to have them in the building.
Understood. I'd take as many as you want, but after a while, you just, yeah. What are you going to put them?
It's just a thought. Stephanie?
Okay. How much are these monitoring devices that we're talking about?
They're all $400 apiece.
Okay, we're talking about 10 of them. Have, there's a couple things on here, so one thing that's listed as being immediate is running the air handlers, but then not until later. Are you changing the filters in the air handlers?
We change the air handles three times a year. We're going to do it four now. And the induction units under the windows, like at Williams, have changed twice a year. So we're going to try it three times a year now.
Is this, so this was discussed with the maintenance department, because the buildings, all of this is not our arena. This is the, this is the Select Board.
Correct.
This is their building. So this is somewhat foreign to me in that we're making these decisions here and this is a building and it really should be the Select Board being involved in this and I don't know how much they have been, have they not been, and now we're talking about allocating money, but this is-
Well, I think, and that's where we were coming from with this, is we wanted to develop a plan that is sort of within our purview, that, that would be the types of things that we would typically be involved in, which is, you know, normal operation, the, the changing air filters, cleaning.
Right, right.
You know, the-
Monitoring, gen, day-to-day monitoring.
Yeah, the purchase of the, the indoor air quality monitoring devices, perhaps you could make a case that that ought to be a town consideration, but, you know, I think we're trying to do our part, I suppose, you know?
Russ?
So what's the total cost? I mean, I've heard 6,400 so far. Is there anything else that's?
What do you mean total cost? For all the items for, to vote?
If we did everything on this list?
Well, I think there are only, there, the only two I saw for, you were looking for funding from us were the monitors and the, and the cleaning, the carpet cleaning, right?
Right.
So that's 6,400.
So do we have an estimate on that yet?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that seems to be a reasonable, you know, if you were to say an amount not to exceed, you know, 6,400, I think that that would allow us to take action on these things.
Okay.
That would give us the, kind of the flexibility we needed to-
Can I just ask? The other piece we talked about was cleaning out underneath the stage in Williams and we don't have a dollar figure on that yet, so it's a cavity, it's a, I don't know the word you used to describe it, but it's, it's some dead space that has accumulated some dust. I don't know that it's ever been cleaned, so we're looking to find a vendor who would be able to come in and somehow get some, some equipment into there to clean it.
Correct.
So.
To clean-
The space under the stage at Williams, so.
So.
We don't have a price yet on that.
Does this include carpets in other classrooms? All, like all the carpets in the middle schools?
No. Well, there are very few carpets left in the middle schools. So there is the band room at, at Glenbrook and then there's carpeting in the main offices. There is, I believe, a little carpeting in the music room, also at Glenbrook, but that has been replaced just recently.
Did you say Glenbrook?
Yeah, Glenbrook, right outside the auditorium. Used to be the home back room.
But the music room at Glenbrook is carpeted?
The music in the back hall there is still original carpeting.
And in, in the classroom? In the music classroom?
That's what I'm talking about, yes. That music classroom in the back hall.
Yeah, but not at Williams, that's right.
Not at Williams, correct.
So I guess I, I would like, I would really like to get a price for replacing that carpet in Glenbrook. I mean, in the music room at Glenbrook. And see if we could put something in there.
I think we're looking at possibly as a summer project for that and cleaning it now and then maybe coming back and replacing it in the summer.
Yeah, so if we can put that on the working list, you know, at least to get estimates for an alternative material like cork or vinyl in there. Cork's a little softer, maybe a little bit better with sound.
You're on sound organ.
Yeah, with sound, yeah. But I think in terms of middle school music, you know, I think they'll be okay with, with the cork and it, just because the, that carpeting is so, it's just so bad.
Okay, get your price.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, Dan.
I think vinyl's cheaper.
Oh, definitely.
Is it cheaper?
Yeah, and if this school is going to not be here-
Yeah.
-in a few years, we don't want to spend a lot.
Yeah, I just want to be mindful, I agree, but I also want to be mindful of the music program too.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's much of a-
The acoustics.
Acoustical difference between cork and vinyl, that was all it was. Russ?
So where would the money come from? School choice or end of year?
Yeah, I would probably recommend that we would just allocate it out of the general fund. I mean, later on our agenda, we have an update for our year-to-date budget report, so I think we would have funds available within our general fund allocation to address some of these things.
Okay.
I think one of the things I really want to keep at the front of our minds with this discussion is that the students who are here today in those buildings are just as important as the future students. So I think we need to do as a community, you know, not just as a school committee, as much as we possibly can for students who are there today and, and the students who will be there for, you know, years and years before we do get new buildings. So that's how I'm looking at this. Stephanie?
I think I'm, part of this is I'm a little confused because we had the air quality testing done, but now you're contracting people out or seeing about prices for carpeting. I wasn't, I'm trying to figure out how this all works. So we did the indoor air quality testing, but now Walt is going to then see about pricing for carpeting and-
Dan is gonna-
Or Dan, sorry.
Yeah, so they took this report that Walt created-
Okay.
-based on his walkthrough, which was really, really detailed. I actually took, it took me a while. I took, I took the document and I kind of broke it down into two pages. I could send it to you guys.
No, that's where my-
So they took that and then they worked off of it.
Okay. No, that's where my confusion is, because I was trying to figure out if we were still working with Walt or it's, that part is stuff-
That's up in the air and that's up to the committee in terms of whether we want to continue to work with Walt there, you know, since he knows the schools at this point, it might be a resource we'd want to utilize and we certainly can utilize, for example, you know, for purchasing some of the devices and for consulting. I know he does a lot of asbestos work, you know, that sort of thing. I think it's really a question for that group to discuss, you know, how we want it.
Other than that, this is normal maintenance for the most part. The only things that are additional are the, the chairs and the monitoring.
Correct.
And that's it.[1772.12] Okay, so that's really all we would be really voting on, is the money for those things. Can we get more information about, like, the carpeting, and the, whether it can be really cleaned on those chairs without falling apart?
Sure, before we start, I might get a guarantor warrant that they'll, they'll back it up or not.
I'm just not sure it's worth it. What were you guys thinking in terms of the benefit of that?
Well, actually, when, we had a meeting, you, we had a meeting when it first started, and they, there was a, everybody commented on a different odor in the building over there. And that was one of the things we were shooting at. Okay, you know, if there's something happening in there, is it, is it the carpeting? Is it the chairs themselves? Is it the ductwork? So a part of it was, okay, let's clean the building. And part of the cleaning is it, cleaning the fabric. I mean, if you've sit on this for 50 years, it's gonna get dirty. If you don't clean it...
So here are my thoughts on that.
Okay.
And this is just, all we can do is project at this point. We don't, you know, we don't, like you said, we don't know for sure. We're trying to do everything we can. It seems like in that room, there may be an issue that's under the stage, but that, you know, semi-porous concrete floor in there, do you have any knowledge about whether it's ever been cleaned and sealed properly, or whether it could? Because that smell and that feeling in the auditorium is, it's, it's a cold, moist, sort of mildewy smell and feel, so it feels more like some, you know, it feels more like that from the bottom, rather than necessarily the chairs. And if they were chairs that the kids were using every single day, and fabric, I would be much more concerned than the sort of occasional auditorium use. I'm really more concerned with under that stage that you guys hit on, and that flooring.
Okay.
What are your thoughts on that? Do you think we can have that...
We can get it sealed.
Looked at? That's a, that, if we could get that floor cleaned and sealed, I think that would do a lot.
You're talking, some service coin to get that done.
Right, but, but I think what we're trying to do now is just get, get the facts.
Okay.
And then as a committee, we're really gonna need to figure out who's gonna, you know, what we, where we wanna go with it. Russ?
But before we go that, I mean, I think we need the facts as far as, is that what we need versus cleaning the chairs? I mean, that's...
Well, we don't know, we won't know that for sure. When you have, when you have...
But if we get a quote on the concrete, and it's, you know, let's say 10 grand, 15 grand, whatever it is, maybe more, we don't have any basis to actually make that happen yet.
Well, we do have the knowledge that when you have a semi-porous material like concrete, tell me if this is accurate, that, is it flooring? If there's no ceiling, you're gonna get moisture from the ground up.
But that's true in probably all of our basements right now. Maybe not yours.
Not mine, 'cause I definitely sealed all my concrete.
The rest of us.
I think it also depends on...
Yeah, you get moisture in your basement if you don't seal exposed concrete, yeah.
Yeah, oh, and the water table. I, I think that, I, I think, I, I think the action plan is good. I like my question, and I think this is where I need some clarity, is when we talk about voting on it, I mean, these things are kind of regular maintenance. It's nice to see the action plan laid out for us, so we can see how we're directly addressing the report that we got. But other than the costs that are on here, which I think we need more money on, I think that, I, I, what would we be voting on?
Well, we don't have to vote on anything tonight necessarily, but it just would be...
It'd be the $6,400 roughly.
Well, for the purchase... But the actual plan, all of these maintenance things are things that are done.
Maintenance plans, we can start cleaning on. The CO2 monitoring would be nice, because that'll give us a plan to see, do we have a problem in your school, you know?
We definitely should vote on that tonight. And then what was the second thing? The...
The other one was the...
The upholstery and carpet cleaning, yeah.
I mean...
Let, I think we could maybe, I think we should wait on that, and, and get the numbers for that, for that floor.
I think we need, as a committee, to talk about that, though.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, that might be right, but...
Yeah, I think once, like, if we have more information to talk about it and figure out...
So if everybody agrees with that, then we could just go that way, I think. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, no, I'm saying that if, do we, I mean, we could either vote tonight to have the chairs cleaned, and have everything done sort of the way that it's laid out?
Yeah.
Or we could wait for additional information on that and vote. Either way, it is fine.
So we would just vote on the monitors tonight?
No, we, we could vote on the monitors, and we could vote on...
The other one was the cleaning of the chairs, which I think I'm hearing you say you'd like...
Well, it says upholstery and carpet cleaning, so I don't know, there's not a lot of carpet. So it's primarily the upholstery on the chairs that cost. So, yeah.
Did you wanna say up to a more, a bigger amount than $6,400? 'Cause you were saying about the stage, so up to $10,000?
Up to $10,000, yeah.
I have no idea what that price would be, so I, I can't even give you any guidance on whether or not that that would be sufficient.
What if we just said up to $5,000 for the monitors for now? 'Cause that's the one thing that seems like everybody agrees they could do that now.
Well, the monitors are gonna be $4,000, right?
Well, I, I'm guessing, I bought it a year ago, it was like $400, it got a gun, but...
Then they don't have to come back to us.
Yep.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we take up to $5,000 out of the general fund to pay for the monitors, the 10 monitors.
The air, air quality monitors, yep.
One second.
Okay, I'll, I'll, any discussion?
Can I ask a little bit more? So those are just specifically CO2 monitors?
No, CO2, temperature, relative humidity.
They do everything that we need, which is great, so we don't have...
Why are they so expensive?
That's actually, that's actually a good price.
I know I have the humidity monitor in my house, I don't know...
Well, these I can download to my, you, you run an app, and you download to your computer, so I can chart the whole thing. It, it's, right now, the one in your house is more like a, this is gonna take a snapshot every 15 minutes, and I'd be able to track it with your classrooms and stuff like that, see exactly what's happening to the building. So, I mean, if, if you load it up, you've got so many kids in a room, it'll show you what's happening, why your CO2 levels are so high.
And these are things that can be transferable to, I would think, any...
Correct.
So I think in that way, that's also beneficial, too. Because I know some of the other schools, we have some...
I said you couldn't, you didn't need in the school, but it'd be a good test to see how your equipment's running after we're done. You can put it in here and see what's going on here, too, any building.
Would it be possible to educate the staff at both schools on how to use it? Because I think it would be...
What, what happens is, I, I put it on a teacher's desk or a teacher's bookcase, I come back in a week, and I download the stuff to the computer, and it just does a chart, and it shows me what, what goes on. But with that being said, it tells, it shows me, you know, not just you get a high carbon dioxide level, I might have a high temperature. If, if the kids aren't in a room, and I have a high level, well, I could bring the temperature down, save some money that way, and/or it shows me that I need some valves to replace, or thermals that are bad. So it gives me a tool to go seek money to fix the, with the little infrastructure we have in there.
I think that actually will be great, for not only that building, but in the future for all buildings, 'cause I think that we have...
So as a teacher, in years comes, I have a problem in my room, just put it in there, a week later, we'll come back and see what's going on, we can chart it, see if there's something going on.
Could I ask, what about other particulate matter that could be in the air?
I mean...
I'll, I'll tell you a little story. I bought a car way back in 1975, it was a Rabbit, and, you know, and they had a plasticizer in it to keep the fabric that they had on the seats flexible. Well, the car was parked in the sun for about six weeks, and this residue started forming on the windshield. Well, there was a major callback on this. VW finally admitted that, yeah, the plasticizer they use in that fabric to keep it flexible will, under heat, go off and dissipate. It's a gas. I don't know if that's going on in our schools, but I know when we built the open space in the old high school building, room 153, they brought in something like 250 plastic chairs, all of which began giving off a residue.
Yeah.
Some of you might remember that, but that's true.
Yeah.
Way back. And as they aged, all the plasticizer disappeared, and they were just hard, okay? Is there a device to measure that kind of...
That gets expensive. They're called cassettes. I mean, you see them with asbestos and stuff like that, when you're, when you're working. All this is a pump, and it draws air into, into your little HEPA filter per se, and then you bring it back to a industrial hygienist or some kind of lab, and they'll read what particulates are in there. But that gets very expensive, unless there's a really concern or something we're shooting at. I wouldn't go down that route right now. I would get the basics up, see what's happening with their air. As long as our filters are clean, and they're working, we're catching the dust, I'd go that route. Especially when most of the units at the middle schools are what they call H and V units. So that means your windows are open come spring, summer, and fall, and early close in the wintertime. So the only time the air filters are working is when the, when the windows are closed and we're running all the fans. So you, you're getting as much mold and dust up on the outside with your windows open.
Right.
So I, I wouldn't really waste my time or money on, on cassettes right now. If you had somebody, a really sick student with mold and whatever like that, and you wanna shake it, then I'd go something like that, but right now, I wouldn't go down that road, that road.
Okay.
It's just my opinion.
For what it's worth, what I've been pressed by with Dan is, is sort of how he approaches the problem, and he, you know, really interested in understanding what the conditions are. So as we talk to Dan about these things, he's, he's always wondering, you know, what's the condition of the filters, the valves, the dampers, the fans, you know, so kinda I think the monitoring will really help Dan understand what needs to be done in a particular wing or a particular classroom, because the conditions vary across the buildings. And so, you know, what might be good in one area might not be good in another area. So I, I, I think this will be really helpful to, helpful to Dan. It'd be helpful to us as administrators, too, and I, and I agree, I think it's something we wanna talk to the teachers about, this plan. I'm really interested in kind of engaging the, the Williams, the Glenbrook staff about what we're doing. And there is a piece of it that, you know, we'll be asking classroom teachers and all staff to, you know, we'll be tugging at this rope. This is something that everybody needs to be involved in. It doesn't totally fall on the shoulders of maintenance and the custodial staff.
If, yeah, if we could get, I think it would be great, Marty, to have a document for staff that just sort of outlines some of the good cleaning practices in their classroom, like the, you know, the wet, the wet wiping, and the HEPA vacuuming, and those sorts of things, and things to keep an eye out for.
Yeah, that's, so that's something that's in process, is sort of putting together kind of almost an advisory to staff on, on what they can do on a regular basis to ensure good air quality, you know?
And we already have, do we already have a plan in place that's sort of weekly, monthly, daily, weekly, monthly, annually, for what needs to be done at each school?
For...
That kind of, for any sort of, like, cleaning out, you know, air conditioning units?
We have a preventive maintenance program, so it'll say, like, we, right now, do the filters three times a year. We're gonna go to four. So, I mean, we'll have to adjust our, our cleaning plan, but it's in what we call SchoolDude. It's a computerized maintenance plan, and you just put the task you want in, and it'll come up on a calendar and say, go do this right now.
Oh, great, that's great.
Right there.
Dan, do we use SchoolDude for, for principals or administrators to make requests of maintenance?
Correct, yeah. Or they can just call on the staff, but that's what they do.
What about the univent cleaning? 'Cause that was a pretty big issue.
The univent cleaning is gonna happen, I'm gonna put one of custodians, and we're gonna maintenance technicians, and they're gonna go through and vacuum out, clean the filters, verify that the dampers are working or not working, and we're gonna build a list of what our next action plan is gonna be with the 30 classrooms. This is just Williams right now, we're gonna start with, this week or next week, and we'll see what happens from there.
Oh, so next week, I, did I, I didn't see that on this document.
Have you heard of vacation?
I don't know if it's on this document, but vacation's coming up, and that's what we're gonna do over there.
Cleaning of the univents at Williams?
On the first page.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, change filters, I don't...
Change filters in the Williams univent, and then the air handling unit at Glenbrook.
Put one down. Right here. Change filters in Williams univents.
No, I was talking about the cleaning of the actual cavity of the univent?
Well, it's the same thing. When they clean the filters, they go through with a vacuum cleaner, and they'll, they'll back out the cabinet itself.
So in other words, like, in this photo, this is pre-filter here, so it would be all of that?
Yeah, they'll, they'll open up the cabinet, vacuum out.
This is what helps me to understand this, okay?
Not a problem.
Okay, that's great, and a HEPA act, and that's fantastic.
That's what we're gonna do.
And then, and then the only thing we still have outstanding that's much trickier is that, that vertical indoor air that we have coming in is unfiltered. So, you know, I think as long as we stay with that building on top of cleaning those univents on a regular basis...
Right.
Hopefully, we can stay on top of that issue. Do you know what I'm saying?
They clean the, the units well before I got here, once a year. They do it in the summertime, the two custodians who back it up. But you know, if you go in your house and you have something that's there for 60 years, it, it does get etched, you know, but it's not a polished enamel. It's steel, and it'll rust, and it'll get kind of corroded a little bit. So they do their best to clean it up, but it's not painted, not a painted, clean surface.
No, but what do we do about that unfiltered outside air? 'Cause that's gonna bring in naturally from the outside, that's gonna bring in mold and particulates from the outside, 'cause it's not filtered.
I think you got it wrong, Jess. Some places in the school, we had the air intake was blocked.
Yeah.
So there was no air coming in.
Right.
Any other coming to the building through a air handler is filtered.
Right.
At Glenbrook, the gentleman was kind of mistaken, he thought there was no filters there. What he was looking at is what they call a mixing box. The mixing box is downstream of your air handler. The air handler has all the heating coils in it, and the air filters, and it projects it out farther downstream. The, the next mixing box will raise the temperature. You don't need filters in it, because it's already had filtered air coming into it.
Right.
So...
But, but these univents in particular is what I'm talking about, because I, I think the question is, are those filters, you know, tight enough? Are they sealed enough that...
The ones in the univent are, they're pretty good.
That stuff coming from the outside is...
So what's gonna happen at the air handling units, where the main ones are, they'll have, the air filters are 24 inches by 24 inches by two inches wide, and there's a cardboard frame around it. We're gonna put, like, gasket material, double-sided tape, and you're gonna stick the two filters together, so the air can't get between the filters. It'll go, it'll have to go through the medium.
On the univents?
The univent is one, one large filter, and it just sticks, sits in there.
Well, what can we do to, can we do the same thing to seal those?
We can try. I'm not sure what, what, I'm not sure of the success on that one as much as I am the air handlers. We'll try our best.
Okay, if we could just look into that, I think that would be great, 'cause it's, I think a lot, a lot of that is an issue with the, the airtight nature of those filters. It doesn't seem like it's 100%.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
I mean...
Yeah, Liz.
Just for cleaning and says you're going to advise on the disposal of surplus goods. I would urge you to call Arlene. She can help you get, you know, old fax machines and whatnot out and dispose it properly.
Russ.
Yep, sorry.
Regarding the air conditioning units at Williams, those are a big problem. So the document reads that we'll analyze the costs associated with replacing the existing air conditioning units versus thorough cleaning. And I would add versus disposal as one of the potential options. What are your thoughts on that particular issue?
Before my time here, they had a, another industrial hygienist come in and check the air quality at Williams. And at that time, they come up with a punch list and they made sure that all the exhaust fans are working. And then they came up with a plan on how to clean the window air conditioners. So what they recommended, and we're following it today, is just to clean the face of the evaporator coil. And they didn't suggest to go any farther than that. So they changed the filter, cleaned the filter. And evaporators, the part that's inside your house, the part that gets cold. And if you're ever taking it off, you'll see it's all like muddy or dusty right there. We clean and disinfect that part, but we don't take it apart. And the industrial hygienist, I'm gonna say three or four years ago, this is the plan they recommended. They didn't recommend taking it apart, going into the condenser. They recommended just cleaning the front of the evaporator.
But that's not gonna clean out all the gunk that's inside the actual unit?
Well, the inside unit, if you understand air conditioning, you've got the inside, you've got, this is your air, your evaporator. This is the condenser.
Yeah.
And the water will flow from your evaporator into a condensate pan. And then it's put on a slinger ring and thrown up against your condenser to cool the compressor in your condenser. That just turns into mud. It's like concrete in there. It's not really, where you're gonna get your mold and stuff is right where it's always wet and stuff. Your evaporator coil, your evaporator cavity is where you're gonna find your problem. Can't say you won't have it inside your condenser. But for the most part, the ones I've taken apart, it's like concrete in there. It's just dusted, it's just hardened over the years. It's baked because that condenser, you can burn your hands on it and it just bakes everything right there.
Well, but also you have the issue of the air coming in from the outside.
The air doesn't come through the condenser.
It comes into the unit.
But it's two different passageways, Jess. One comes in, cools, goes back out. The other one comes up from the front and cools the, goes through the evaporator. They don't touch. There's two different air paths there.
So you don't think that the air units are-
Say no, I'd be, you know, I can be proved wrong by anybody. But the other hygienist that looked at it, from my past experience, I'm a licensed refrigeration mechanic. It's, on small units like that, it's just not worth it per se. I've never really had that much of a problem with them. And I've been going on 30 years doing it. So, I mean, can I find mold? You probably might find something in anyplace. But is it worth the effort to go through and take it apart? It's at least two men because they're pretty good sized units.
Yeah.
You gotta tear them apart. After a while, you gotta throw them away because it's probably cheaper to buy new ones and all the labor to get into one of those.
But even if you buy new ones, we're still gonna have to disassemble them if we're gonna properly clean them on a regular basis.
This is where-
If we're gonna maintain the equipment.
This is where Walt and I disagree on that. I think the, there were industrial hygienists that recommended this before. And we're following them, that to the letter.
Okay. So maybe that's something that we need to look into a little bit more.
Sure.
Only because it was, and talk about a little bit more. You know, at Williams, it was identified as one of the major contributors to the air quality issues. That and the univents were two of the big, big ones. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we're really turning over every stone here. Especially at Williams and making sure that we're doing this right.
Yep.
I don't want to take any chances with those. So continued discussion on that for sure. Thanks. Is it, there's a lot of HVAC stuff in the report that is definitely bigger price tag, bigger, you know, bigger project. Is that something that we can, you know, we would outsource in terms of getting an estimate for an inspection on the HVAC system at Glenbrook?
I think we, I'd like to do, come up, before we start going out and taking a shotgun approach of what we're doing. I think we should take the approach of, you know, let's find a problem and see what's going on exactly over here. Do I think we had some high carbon dioxide levels? Yes, we did. Did we have bypasses in some of our filters? Sure, we can get better at tidying that up. Sometimes when you put a real heavy filter inside a unit, you have to increase the horsepower of the fan because now you have to push more through the fan. So there's a balancing act of the size of the filter and what you're doing in there. So I really, really like to go point by point and see what's happening. That's why I kind of like the idea of putting the carbon dioxide levels in there. See what's happening, see where our problem areas are as they're developing a plan and working at it.
Well, I'm just wondering specifically about the ducts.
The duct work, is cleaning them or?
Yeah, what do we do? Do we have any sort of plan?
I can get an estimate. I've done duct cleaning.
I mean, you and I were both there that day at Glenbrook when we walked by that return vent.
Well, they get a price on that one.
At Glenbrook and it was disgusting. So, you know, in terms of looking at the ducts and what needs to be done to clean, to clean those out, whether we need, whether that's something we can do internally or-
No, we'd have to contract it out.
Yeah, or something.
Yeah, we'd contract it out.
That's something that I really would feel strongly about looking into.
Okay, I'll get your price.
And then I didn't know, you know, for all of this, is it possible to go out for grants from the EPA? Is there anyone, anywhere we could go as a school district to really try to?
I'm meeting with Eversource tomorrow because we're a green community.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to see if, there's a term called retrocommissioning. I'm trying to see what they can do for retrocommissioning our buildings. And how is that, I was attacking it with just the controls. So if I can see if the controls of the system are working, great. You know, it might help our air quality or not. I mean, if the thermostat's not controlling the damper, I'm not getting the fresh air. And again, I don't know. I have a meeting tomorrow at 1:00. So we'll see where we are, see what they, what they can come up with. I'm trying to see, again, funding, see if I can find another source of money to get that done.
Who would be a good person to look at the EPA for grants for public schools?
I don't know.
I'm just wondering if we can ask somebody to sort of take a look at what's available for school districts.
EPA?
I could query.
Yeah.
I could query the colleagues around and see if anybody said-
That would be fantastic. You guys have sort of listserv set up where you can throw questions out there? Or, you know, any other resource. EPA was just the first one that came to my mind because, you know, obviously we're not the first school district to deal with these kinds of issues and not really have the money to do it. So my concern with the fresh air part is that the unfiltered, you know, kind of fresh air.
Well, again, if you're talking just to univent heaters.
Well, there's, so, for the public so they don't, because I just want to clarify. So at Williams, and please correct me if this is wrong, Dan. We don't, we have the univent. So each classroom essentially has its own heating source.
Correct.
At Glenbrook, we have a duct, central duct.
Correct.
So it's fed through one entire system. They're very different systems, which makes it challenging in each way. Is that, is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay.
But each univent has its own filter.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So then that question that I had was about, you know, filtering that, the fresh air exchange in terms of dealing with the carbon dioxide issue and getting those numbers down, PPMs down to where they should be. You know, if we're bringing in, I think it was the first item that you had on your plan. Promote fresh air exchange by running air handlers off hours at Glenbrook. Was that the air handlers in the auditorium?
We were trying to school, the auditorium and the classrooms, I guess.
Are we gonna try to open up those air handlers in the auditorium?
Auditorium, we're thinking the gymnasium.
I'm sorry, the gymnasium.
Yeah. Right now, it's not on my list. We're talking about it, but I'm kind of nervous to do that right now.
What's your hesitation?
Well, if I opened up their forced hot water coils.
Yeah.
So if the valve closes and like we had single digit days the other day, you draw air across a coil that's full of water and it doesn't have freeze protection, you're gonna have a big leak. And right now, they haven't been touched in 20 years. So I'm willing to bet they don't work.
Can we experiment with one and see what we can, see what we can do?
You talked about waiting till the springtime.
Right, I like to look there. Right now, just, I don't want to get up there and just want to, because-
Till it gets a little warmer.
Yeah, you compromise the whole building. And then you ruin the gym floor and everything else. I don't want to try that.
Yeah, yeah. Stephanie?
I just wanted to, I feel like we need to vote on the monitors. I think the rest of it is a maintenance issue. And if there are questions, they can be raised, you know, I think with Dan at another time. And then if you use Walt's report as some guidance. But I think that all of these are general maintenance things that you nicely outlined for us. So we could just see how you're going to
Right.
attack some of those concerns that Walt brought. But the only things I see on here are the monitors and the chairs and carpeting that we would have to, I mean, I don't, that's sort of how I see it, that this is a maintenance issue.
I disagree with you.
So I don't know if we want to go ahead and vote on those monitors? And then, I don't know if they're, you know, as far as the HVAC and the, I mean, that's not- Yeah, I think that that's a really in-depth conversation that is maybe, you know.
Yeah, I think the purpose of the discussion for tonight was both to discuss allocation of funds and what we feel is appropriate to allocate. And also to get more of an understanding, feedback about the actions and what we're taking and have a discussion about the document itself. So it's really both of those things. And I guess my question would be, if we want to vote, do we, do folks really only now want to vote on the monitoring devices or do we also want to? I'm not sure what to do about the upholstery, carpet, you know, cleaning and sealing of Williams. Do we want to do an up to a certain amount with that category as well?
Well, right now, we have a motion that we should vote on.
All right, so just the-
And we'll talk about that after, I think.
So just the motion on the?
And then go to the other topic.
You already made that motion, right?
And the second.
Oh, okay, right. So let's vote on that. So we have up to?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, okay. All those in favor?
Okay, all right.
So that was for the air quality monitor?
Yep.
Okay, so that's up to five. And then what do we want to do? What do you think, Dan? What should we do about the other item?
Let me ask Mar Bender.
Okay.
And if he thinks that the chairs will be compromised, we won't do it. And we'll get that in writing, have him back them up. And if he says it's gonna be compromised, I'll come back and tell you we're not gonna do it.
But can we get, and can we get that?
I'll get a price for the-
For the floor, yeah.
Floor. And the big one, I think, was Tom, it was under the stage, it's a return plan.
Yeah.
And that has not been addressed since the building is built.
Is there an amount that we want to discuss as a motion that, you know, up to a certain amount on those items tonight? Do you have any kind of sense about?
I, you know, it's a short run, so I couldn't see it going over 5,000. But after that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go any farther. So if you said, I get it done for five, great, but I wouldn't go any higher.
What do you mean you wouldn't go any higher?
If they're saying it's after $5,000, I have to go give bids in different ways for procurement. So if you say, keep it under $5,000 and if you can get the duct work under the stage cleaned, I will go forward, not to exceed 5,000.
Well, we have until April vacation for that. I would, Tom?
So why don't you give us a chance? We'll reach out to a vendor, get some pricing, come back to you on the floor, the upholstery and the carpeting and cleaning that duct work.
Okay, great.
Sounds good.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dan. I really appreciate it. Next on our agenda is the superintendent report.
A few items, there's a hard copy of this report in your packet. I wanted to let you know that local and state police will be doing some active training at Wolf Swamp on Monday and Tuesday of next week. We're really pleased to give the police access to the building at a time when it's unoccupied to conduct some training. And we'll be sure that the community is advised and notified about that. The Blueberry Hill search is ongoing. The committee's been active and very productive. The snow has altered our timeline slightly. We will be bumping interviews back to March 8th and 9th. Those are the sort of first round. Expect that I would have a candidate for you on March 28th that you're meeting at the end of March.
How does that work?
How does that work?
That meeting, having a candidate at the meeting?
So it's by-
Oh, a candidate proposal?
Well-
Or a person?
By, yeah, by statute, the superintendent hires principals. But I would only want to move forward, obviously, if I had the support and backing of the screening committee, the community, the school committee, so.
Will you be?
I would, I would, I would want the candidate to come to the meeting.
Oh, okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Candidate would come to the meeting and you would have an opportunity to chat and hear from that, from that person.
Okay. And not, but not a vote?
Not a vote.
Okay.
The homework study is ongoing. I thank Donna Hutton for coordinating a study team around that. And they've been engaged in a literature review, doing an assessment of our current practices. School councils have been engaged. There's been a lot of back and forth between the school councils and that team.
That's great.
Survey is out there and it may be closed by now. But I know at one school, there were 177 responses, I think. So I think we've had some great participation from the, from parents on that.
When did that go out? I don't remember seeing that.
I don't remember seeing that either.
I don't think it blew very.
Okay, can we, we'll check.
Yeah, I never saw it.
It was my understanding that it went out at the three schools, so.
The three elementary schools?
The three elementary schools. I will check on that.
I don't think so.
I apologize if that, if that didn't happen.
Unless it just went to my wife.
No, we'll, we'll check on that.
No, I didn't get one. So, yeah.
Yeah, I would, you're tuned in, I would think you would know. I'll find out.
Thanks, Marty.
Yep. Hoping by early April, we would be able to come back to the committee with sort of a statement that we can all embrace, that would guide our practices. And frankly, we would want to hold ourselves accountable to that statement, to that philosophy. And so I'm pleased with the progress, but I do want to find out about the survey there. Jessica Leahy is coming to the district March 7th. She's from the special programs committee. She will be giving a talk entitled "The Gift of Failure." So-
Great.
Gift that keeps on giving for some of us. She's a great columnist, acclaimed author, and we're looking forward to having her there. We ran a little, kind of an impromptu discussion following the last special program speaker. And we had a great conversation afterwards. So we want to do that again and sort of have an opportunity for everyone to debrief. We've had some snow days, some challenging calls. I gave you a list of some of the factors that I follow when we're trying to make decisions about whether to open, delay, cancel. And then even the timing of the decision is a decision unto itself. So we're not batting a thousand maybe this year, but I think we're doing okay. And at the end of the day, we just want to make sure everybody gets here safe. It's about an hour and a half window when we have to get students to school between the time of, sort of the first kids leave via car or bus to the time the last ones arrive. It's a big window, so we've got to make sure that that happens safely. DPW has been doing a great job. I'm really, really impressed by the work and our custodial team. I've said it before, but I think it's worth saying again. They really, that put us in a position to open. Sometimes the issue is what surrounding communities are like, frankly. So we, you know, we have to make sure there are adults here to watch 2,900 young people. So sometimes that's a consideration. And, you know, we want staffing and students to get here safely. So we do our best and gather-
Meaning that taking staff transportation into account in the decision is an important factor. Yeah, and I think that's something that we don't always think about.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, and I'm always open to feedback on that. And it's a challenging process sometimes, but I get a lot of help from town officials, DPW, police. Everybody weighs in.
I think it's, I think it's tough to be up at whatever hour you have to wake up and for so many days doing that. I really appreciate all the thought that you put into it. And I know in my discussions with you how, you know, thoughtful you are about each and every issue. And your communication with DPW has been excellent. Really appreciate all the work and time that goes into that. It's really a big, a big effort, a lot of energy expended to deal with snow.
Thank you. We'll stick with it, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. And that's it.
All right. Very good. Thank you. I also wanted to really thank Donna Hutton for all the work she's doing on the homework investigation and gathering of information. I'm excited to hear what the team has to say. Really thank Donna for her stepping up and sort of taking the, leading the charge on that issue. Wonderful. And all the work of the school councils looking at that issue. I do not have a report and Nishal is not here tonight. Do we have any other reports this evening? So we'll move on to the finance subcommittee. Met on February 2nd. Tom, and you have two items that do not need to be voted on?
The first one would potentially require a vote depending upon what action the committee would like to take. So finance subcommittee did, we did discuss, we had a, we received a request from the town manager to see if the school committee would consider supporting funding to pay for a fence that was installed on various locations around the athletic, the stadium field out back here. Along this new upper field, there was never any fencing to help control the venue and to keep participants here watching games from accessing the upper field. There was additionally some gates added to the existing fencing over by the tennis courts and then some fencing along by the concession stand. So the total cost is approximately $9,080.42. I think the benefit of our athletic program really is the main recipient of this fencing being installed. Even though there are probably a number of other priorities that they would have advocated for. But along with grounds, form, and they felt, you know, the decision was made that this fencing would help facilitate controlling traffic on that upper field.
I'm not totally clear on where you're talking about.
So if you look out right here along Bliss Road from the fence that runs along Bliss.
Yep.
Basically perpendicular to it.
Across the street?
Nope. Right on the stadium field.
On the stadium field, yeah.
Yeah, it would run from Bliss Road to the grandstand. So it would keep people from getting access to this upper practice field that we have, this open space.
So there's one on the track, the chain link fence.
Correct.
Along the track.
Yes.
This fence would be behind the bleachers?
It runs basically from the middle of the bleachers all the way to the fence that runs along Bliss Road.
Oh, okay.
But it's already there. I mean, it's-
It's there now. It's already been installed. It's new.
Okay.
There was never any fencing there before. There was never any fencing there before. In the fall, every year, they'd have to come and put up some, that orange plastic construction fencing to help keep-
Attractive.
It's, yes, not very attractive. Also wasn't very effective.
Yeah, not very effective.
Easily get knocked over, so permanent fencing was installed. I think the cost ended up being a little higher than they expected.
Fencing was really expensive.
Yeah, so, so they were looking to see if maybe the school department could assist since the athletic program is the main recipient and beneficiary of this fencing.
Russ?
So the subcommittee talked about this, and-
Yeah, what was the discussion?
The, I think we were generally in favor of doing it this one time, but making it clear to, that in the future, this can't happen without us knowing about it first. So I think there were some, I don't know what, exactly what happened, but-
What, I think, I think we need to understand a little bit more about what happened. Did you guys talk about the chain of events already?
Pardon the pun?
We did. I, I guess I don't want to try and repeat it, but, I mean, you could repeat it, but you know it better than I do. I'd just be repeating what Tom told me, but I understand that there was an issue with the way it happened. It got funded before it ever came to us.
It got funded by whom?
I think it got approved to be installed without the authorization for funding-
By whom?
On the town side.
The town.
I can't necessarily say who's, because I don't know on the town side who would authorize it.
And who approached you, though?
Stephen Crane asked if the school department would consider supporting, funding it because it was done in conjunction with the ground foreman to help control keeping participants here at a sporting event off of that upper field.
But there was some discussion from our side with them about it. It wasn't, I guess this wasn't a priority of ours, but it was something that was discussed, and then it happened. It's probably not where we would have spent the money, you know, if we had to rank order things, but-
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that it happened, and now we're being asked to, to pay for it after the fact.
There were parts of it that we most certainly did ask for. The fencing along the concession stand, the gate over by the tennis courts were things that the athletic director did ask, that when they were looking at it, that they would consider adding these components also. So it all kind of got bundled together.
And they did add those components.
They did. And kind of moved forward without there being an approval process. It just kind of-
That's what really bothers me.
One day it was being talked about, and soon-
That's what bothers me, the process.
I, I think everybody involved acknowledges that there was some breakdown in the process as to how this project got done. So, but as Russ indicated, the fence is here. It's not going away. And there is a vendor who, unfortunately, who came forward and installed the fence with good faith that he would receive compensation for.
And the town would have to go to a town meeting, right, to fund this? Is that correct?
Yeah, they, they would have to wait till May to get some additional appropriation.
John?
The principal purpose of this fence, though, is to, for crowd control at football games where admission is charged.
That is correct.
So over time, they're going to earn this money back. Right?
I mean, in theory, the, you know, as we've seen earlier in the year, the gate receipts are not as high as they have been in past years, so, and we do use some of those funds to support the athletic program, but there is, it is to help control the crowd here for athletic events.
Russ?
So in my mind, the way I looked at it was, I don't think this is obviously something I'd want to do again, but I think one time is a goodwill gesture to the town based on the way things are going with the budget and SOI. I think it's, sometimes you do things because, one, this is, this is helping us as a school. I mean, it's on our, the land that we use, and I, I'd be okay with making an exception this time. I wouldn't do it again, but I would do it this time.
Stephanie?
I think it's also worth noting that we do best to those monitors that we just voted to approve, $4,000, $5,000, up to $5,000, also really is something that is the town's responsibility, as I see it. It's to, it's regarding their buildings, but I think that when we make these good faith efforts and gestures, I think it's important to make note of them.
I think we'd have to send something in writing to the town saying, this is one time only. We're doing this in good faith. However, we don't expect to have another request like this in the future.
I should have asked you these questions before, I remember, before we started. I apologize, Tom and Russ and John. But was the discussion had with the town that the schools would pay some of the bill when the plans were being created?
I don't know that there was ever a discussion with funding for any of this fencing. I think the athletic director was involved when the vendor was here looking at the site and where specifically the fence would be installed.
But our understanding was that the town was going to be paying for the fencing? That was our understanding throughout the process?
Yeah, I think when we move forward with a, with a request like this, we automatically would assume that this would be something the town would pay for. We don't, our budget doesn't contain funding for maintenance like this of the grounds, or I think as Stephanie indicated, of the buildings. But being how the situation played out, there never was a discussion where the funding was going to come from, because it happened before any dialogue took place.
So when you got this bill, was it sort of like, okay, here's your share, or was it, gee, I'm sorry, but we need help funding this?
Um, I think it was, unless a situation has come up. This isn't necessarily the school department's share. Would there be any consideration to assist in getting this paid?
What situation?
Uh, that there wasn't a proper process that was followed when the approval was given to have the project move forward.
They would have to take it to town meeting to have this funded, and they need to pay the bill now?
No, I think that's part of the situation, definitely.
I, I just, I, I would not feel comfortable voting to approve, for example, like we did tonight, an expenditure on the carbon dioxide monitors, and then turn around and send the bill over to the town and say, I actually really think that you should pay that. It's just not how I like to conduct business.
I don't think it was a board of selectmen. It was somebody else around the town.
I don't even know that the town manager knew about the situation until the invoice showed up. So I don't know that anybody in the position who could authorize it was aware of it until after the project was completed.
So who signed up? Was there any paperwork with a quote that was signed out, Tom?
I believe there was a quote received and a verbal authorization given.
With, with who?
I mean, I'd rather not get into the specifics of the who and-
Okay.
And what. I mean, we were asked if the school department would consider assisting, so I felt it was important to bring it to you for consideration.
And John and Russ and Michelle all felt comfortable with it?
There, I think, I think Russ's and John's feelings were yes, but that this is not a practice that we would like to engage in regularly.
And I can't remember exactly what Michelle thought of it, actually, but I think she was on the same page.
I think she was in agreement.
Yeah. I don't want to speak with her, for her, with her here.
Well, the fence has been installed, so we're going to have, someone's going to have to pay for it.
Oh, yeah. Someone's, yeah, there's no question about that.
And the athletic director, who's one of our employees, thinks it's a good idea, and will be of some benefit. I support it, along with what you said about, let's make this a one time.
It's just the process is really, like I said, it's the process that's concerning more than anything. And not being able to talk about it in the big picture of all of our expenditures and our budget issues. Stephanie?
So this was a fence that we wanted up, we benefit from?
I think there were aspects of this project that we initiated, without a doubt.
It sounds like, um, okay. So my question was, I didn't know if something went in this process along that shouldn't have gone along, and somebody signed for something, if something was put up on school property that shouldn't have been, and I don't know the ins and outs. Is it something that is more appropriate for an executive session to find out what went down, or are we-
That's a good point.
Okay with the fence, it's something we wanted, the process fell through, and it's more a matter of, are we willing to pick up the bill?
I'd say it's something we, we benefit from clearly. It's a, it's a safety issue, it's a monitoring issue, it's a supervision issue. It, it will protect the fields. We definitely will benefit from it. It, it unfortunately wouldn't be something that we could talk about, as I understand it, in executive session.
Could I just draw up something, too? All of the fencing that was there when we had the old high school building was taken down because of the need for access to the construction-
Yes.
Construction site.
Yes.
So some of that was replaced, but not all of it. So this is kind of like the point up on it.
I think this is part of where the charter really is very challenging, and so, so is the discussion about the indoor air quality. It's just, nobody seems to have a good handle on who's supposed to be paying for what. It's just so, it's so confusing. Maybe it's just because I was on the school committee pre-charter, so maybe, you know, I don't know. It seems very difficult to find the boundaries and the lines for these types of issues.
I have a motion on this.
Okay.
Okay. I move that the school committee authorize payment to GMH Fence for furnishing and installation of fencing and gates at the stadium field as presented on invoice number 466975, and to charge $8,890.95 to the athletic revolving account, and $889.47 to the concession stand account. So these are, please note, it's a revolving account.
Second. Are we ready to vote? Can I ask for a repeat on those numbers?
Repeat?
Yeah.
Okay, invoice number, but you want the dollar number?
Oh, please, with the concession.
John, I can answer.
The $8,890.95.
The, the first number would be the fence along the upper field and the gates. The second figure of $889.47 is the fencing at the concession stand, in which we do have balance in that revolving account.
Okay. Yep.
And John, your motion would be with the understanding that a letter goes to the town saying, doing this is good faith, one time only, that type of thing.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll want to be really specific. Tom, are you going to have to write that?
I'm taking notes right now. Yes.
You know, the, the school committee is really concerned about the process by which these decisions are reached, and we need to have, play a role in that process. I don't know. I just drew a blank. We need to play a role in the process once we have estimates and we understand what we're committing ourselves to financially. That sort of gist, you know? Does anyone want to add anything to that? Okay. Thank you for doing that, Tom.
We'll have to vote.
Yeah. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you very much.
The second item in your packet that finance sub reviewed was a year-to-date, an FY17 year-to-date budget report dated January 31st. And again, this document is to show kind of a projection of the FY17 budget and how things may play out over the course of the next five months, and to give a sense of the potential fund balance, the balance that we may have come June 30th. So, again, it's most subject, most certainly is subject to change. We only have a few months of heating bills in this projection, although I did project out the remaining months based on historical usage. But, you know, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Was there any discussion in subcommittee that John or Russ would like to outline or highlight? Anything in particular?
No.
If not, that's okay?
Not really.
All right.
I mean, it looks like the budget's going along fairly well this year, so.
Okay. Then there's no vote on that, so we don't need a motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
And thank you to the finance subcommittee for all of their hard work. I know you meet a lot and put in a lot of time, Russ, John, and Michelle. Thank you. Under ongoing business, our first item is the middle school SOIs. We have some very, very long motions that are involved in this discussion, so somebody could get geared up to read those while we're discussing. That'd be great.
Okay. I move that this, well, I guess we'll do one at a time, then. I move the school committee make their priority statement of interest Glenbrook Middle School as recommended by Mr. Doug Roberts from J C J Architects.
Second.
Can I ask why Glenbrook? I thought, I thought Williams was the one that was, well, see, oldest, and I thought in the worst shape.
I think the educational issues with Glenbrook were important. I don't know.
I, I think with J C J, and when I spoke with Mr. McCarthy at the MSBA briefly, when you look at their factors, one of the factors that's most important is safety, security, and so Glenbrook is higher up on the list based on its design than Williams. So I think J C J, and it appeared to me, Mr. McCarthy, thought that a building designed like Glenbrook would have a better chance than a building designed like Williams, because Williams is old. It's got failing, you know, HVAC and systems, and so does Glenbrook, but Williams is even older. But those are very low on the priority list. So when you look at the SOIs, you have those eight factors. Those are like seven, eight, six. Security and safety is like a two or a three. So I think it gives you a better chance to get approved. You know, that's what J C J said, at least, and I tend to agree with them, too, looking at the factors, it seems. I, I would say, my own opinion is, I, I think if the concern was, what if they say Glenbrook should be replaced alone? As a committee member, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I wouldn't be in favor of just replacing Williams either. I think either we try to repair both of them, if we could do that, or we try to look at one school for everybody. But I don't think just replacing Glenbrook would be a wise idea if that actually came down to their recommendation.
That was not something that had crossed my radar, that scenario. Is that something we need to be concerned about?
I, I had just sort of informational for you in terms of making this decision. I had a chance to talk to Diane Sullivan, who some of you maybe had worked with in the past in the high school project and senior staff at MSBA, I forget her title, but I said, tell me about this decision that the school committee is making tonight. It's a sort of a high stakes decision, and, and knowing our situation and knowing that we're submitting two SOIs, she would say that it's not really a high stakes question, because, you know, you're, you're putting forth two SOIs, and you've, you're saying that you want to use the SOI process to explore the feasibility of, of a, a single middle school. And so there, if you identify one as a priority, they're still going to come in and look at both, and they're going to still look at our middle school programming holistically. So I guess I would say, I, I don't know that you need to agonize over this decision, frankly. I think it's, I think it's, I, I would probably go to the default of the recommendation of J C J for the reasons that Russ identified.
Okay. Great. Do we want to vote on that item? All of those in favor? Liz, you want to go for it?
Okay.
Sorry.
Resolved. Having convened an open meeting on January 19th, 2017, prior to the closing date, the school committee of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated no later than April 7th, 2017, for the Williams Middle School located at 410 Williams Street, Long Meadow, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of a school, of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of a school facility system such as roofs, windows, boilers, and heating and ventilation systems to increase the energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements and hereby further specifically- consistent with state and approved local requirements and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees acceptance or the approval, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Long Meadow to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
What was the origin of that, the substance of that motion?
Did I have to say that?
Yes, that is the approved language. The MSBA would want to know that that specific motion has been made.
They provided that language?
They provided the language, right. So.
Could you go over the changes before we vote on that?
Sure. Yeah, so, so the reason it is the, the two SOIs are in front of you tonight is really in response to some of the feedback we received from the select board. And so the SOIs before you are identical to the SOIs that you voted on previously with three exceptions. And one relates to the question of overcrowding. If you recall, the select board had questioned our characterizing us as having an overcrowding problem. Frankly, I'd sort of agree with that feedback. We don't, we don't have an overcrowding situation, but, so essentially I unchecked a box that asked, is there an overcrowding at the school facility? I was still able to convey through the SOI that, you know, we have problems with the footprint and the layout and the allocation of space. So that's a, you know, a minor change in many respects. The second change to the SOI relates to maintenance and capital repair. The select board had sent to me a list of all the capital upgrades that had happened at both schools since 1952 or whatever, well, actually be later than that, but all the capital milestones through the years. And I wanted to make sure we accurately reflected that, the effort that the town has made over the years to maintain the building. So my proposal would be that we take that list that was supplied by the select board and we attach it as a sort of an ancillary report, a supplemental report to the SOI, which is you're allowed to do.
And you've looked at this.
What's that?
And you've looked at this too.
Yes.
Some of this isn't really, some of this is actually before the buildings were built.
Yeah, it goes back to the acquisition of the land. We could, we could.
MSBA is not gonna care about.
We could exert, we could exert some other parts of it if you wanted.
But I agree with the concept. It's just to start at, after the buildings were built, what did we do to them?
Okay.
Because the rest of this, like, $2 million for the school.
Yeah, okay.
Don't care about that.
Yeah, it needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, we'll definitely, we can do that.
Why does it say junior high school?
I think it was originally known as a junior high. The whole middle school concept came a little bit later.
But before you had Glenbrook, it was just Williams, right?
Yeah, I think so.
So it was probably a junior high.
Williams, junior high school.
I don't know, it wasn't here back then.
Yes.
Guessing.
Today's center school is the old junior high school.
No kidding? I didn't know that. Wait, when was center school?
1920.
Gosh, way back, okay.
When were they created?
Because I feel like I'm pretty old.
In the 20s, 1920s.
Okay.
That's when Long Meadow only educated up to the eighth grade and then sent, well, we paid to send students to Springfield. Springfield offered classical tech, trade, and commerce.
Yeah.
And then a number of families sent their children to private schools for high school level.
You are a good historian, John. Hate to lose you.
The, the final change just relates to a sort of a couple of sentences that tighten up the idea that we'd like to use the SOI to explore the feasibility of a single facility. I think that was some of the feedback that, again, that we got from the select board, that we need to be very sort of upfront with that as a, as a possible approach. And so you'll see that we indicated that enrollment patterns projections also suggest that a single facility could serve the community's needs and that town residents and town officials appear to be supportive of the concept and that that's based on feedback that we've gathered at community forums and also at the joint meeting that we had with the select board. So it really is to signal to the MSBA that, you know, this community is interested in exploring the feasibility of that, of a, of a single middle school conceptually.
Russ?
I just want to add something on enrollment, because I've said this a number of times publicly. We kept looking at the NASDAQ projections, and so we looked back 10 years and forward 10 years, and those projections have been basically flat. But when we look at actual enrollment, like we just did with the budget, when you look at pre-K, K1 and 2, they're very low compared to the past. And then 3, that class that's looked at as a bubble year, is actually no bigger than what we have at the high school, and it's actually smaller. So even though we're calling it a bubble year, that's actually what we used to be for enrollment. So I think the, up to second grade right now is very low. Now, that, that could change, but it's something I didn't realize until recently. So my comments about enrollment were based on NASDAQ. It may be that we actually are gonna have lower enrollment, but it could be that, you know, the kids aren't coming in for the, the private schools yet. When they get a little older, they come in and it bumps up, but that's not what the historical data really shows, so. So I don't know. MSBA does a real detailed view of enrollment before they grant any building. They're usually very conservative, but based on those lower grade numbers, now if you project that out, it would be like a, two middle schools with 500 kids total. I don't think it would be that low, but that's the way it would project out right now. So you'd have two middle schools with 250 kids in them.
Thanks, Russ. That's really helpful. Thank you.
I think that enrollment data is interesting and I do think we have to keep watching it. I think that when we talk about population as a whole and whether we're top-heavy and are we getting the turnover, or are we going to see lower numbers and families coming in because we have the baby boomers staying in their houses and not getting that turnover? So it could be that it's low now, it could be that it turns over, but I think it's something that it's hard to necessarily predict. But I think that there's some interesting data there when you look at the housing market in Long Meadow and who's there and the turnover. So I think there's other pieces that I don't know how much they look at that in terms of how they project out, but it, but it's, it's worth noting. I have a concern about just the, the sentence that says, "Town residents and town officials appear to be supportive of the single middle school concept."
What page is that on? Because I'm looking at 26. The one that she, Stephanie, you just read?
28, on Glenbrook.
Okay.
And then it goes on to say, "This is based on feedback out of the community at several informational forums and joint meetings between the select board and the school committee." I don't, and you can talk about this, but I don't know that that is an accurate reflection. I, I think that people are, I think the rest of the SOI takes into account that we are willing, that the point of it is to look at, do we renovate, do we consolidate? But that to me, to say that the town residents are supportive of the single middle school concept, I don't know if that's accurate.
I don't think, I think you're right. You probably couldn't hang your hat on it in terms of moving forward. I think the, the MSBA just wants to get some sense that that's something, it's part of the conversation right now.
And I think it's within the rest of the SOI, but that statement right there, and when we did meet with the select board last time, that was part of Mark Gold's statement of, you know, his concern was, why aren't you just saying what you want to do? Do you want to consolidate? Do you want to keep two middle schools? And our whole argument was, we don't know. But then this one sentence says that we're supportive of one single middle school concept. And I can say as a school committee member, I have not made that decision yet. That's why I want to get more information. And that sentence, well, I, I understand, I think the rest of the SOI already covers it, that we're looking at the two, but that one sentence seemed, you know, not really to be reflective of where we're at.
Which sentence? The district parents who have attended recent middle school forums?
No, to say that we're, we are peer supportive of the single middle school concept.
Good bracketed statement there.
Well, when we say town officials, is the board of selectmen in favor of that?
That's, that, well, I think.
It seemed to be.
Oh, town officials, sorry.
Yeah, that, that was, that was the genesis of that statement.
I mean, they sent it to us.
That sort of based on.
I see, okay.
And again, I think Stephanie makes a point. You're not, you're not hanging your hat on the forums that we've held and the joint meetings that we've held, right? I mean, you still have to get a better sense of what the community would be interested in.
But that was the general sense of the meeting and goes to what we were talking about at the beginning of this process, which is the MSBA wants to come into a community that really everybody shares the same vision and is looking for the same thing and isn't divided. So I think that was one.
And there's a, there's a lot of work to be done on that, on that idea. And it's, I think it's sort of conceptual and there's, there's so much that would need to be considered.
John?
Well, as far as discussions on the middle school project, I go back all the way to when I got on the board in 2008, there was a majority and a consensus in the school committee to go for one. And the only person that I know of who spoke out against this was Alex Grant, who was then on the select board about two years ago, when he said he did not support consolidation, he wanted to maintain neighborhood.
Neighborhood schools.
So-called neighborhood middle school.
Yeah.
But I believe, and I'm not an expert on it, I think he's the only one who publicly stated that.
I think so.
So that's just for the record. Now, I know we haven't, the current board, school committee, has not spoken definitively on that.
Right. Russ?
So what if we change additionally, "The town residents and town officials appear to be instead of supportive of, willing to consider the single middle school concept."
Yeah, that's nice language.
Because I think from the forum, I went to almost all the forums, and I think that is true.
I think that's.
Whether everybody's supportive of it, I don't know, but I think everybody was willing to consider it.
I like that.
The negative comments I had, which there were a few, I would say the vast majority of those people changed their mind later after they went through the whole presentation.
Based on, was there anything in particular?
Yeah, there was one person that I can think of that was kind of leery about it, and once we explained it, that person's definitely in favor of one now. But there's only been a couple people total that really seem to have an issue with it. Alex Grant is one of them. But there's probably, there could be lots of other ones for all we know, so I think it'd be better to say we're willing to consider it.
Yeah, I like that.
And I think that'll be fine for MSBA. I don't think it has to be, we're supportive of it.
Thanks, Russ.
And I think that, that wording is within the document in another spot as well.
Yeah.
And as we, we talk about people, I mean, I'm a school committee member and I cannot tell you that I'm in support of one building, but I, it is something that I'm considering. I just need more data, more information.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I think that's excellent. Is everybody comfortable with that language change? Thank you for that suggestion, Russ. Appreciate it. Do we want to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, next. Last long motion now.
Okay. Resolve. Having convened in an open meeting on January 19th, 2017, prior to the closing date, the school committee of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, have voted to authorize a superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated no later than April 7th, 2017, for the Glenbrook Middle School located at 110 Cambridge Circle, Long Meadow, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of a school facility system such as roofs, windows, boilers, heaters, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replacement of or in addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for full range programs consistent with state and approved local requirements and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees acceptance or the approval, the awarding of a grant or, or any other future commitment, sorry, other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Long Meadow to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
All right, one more time now with feeling, Liz. Thank you.
I almost haven't memorized.
I don't think I've ever seen a motion that long. Diane?
The only thing is, if the motion was written as January 19th, and it needs to be February 14th.
Uh-huh, yeah. Good catch.
You don't have to reread them, just, I want to point that out. I'm gonna change it in the written.
The new date.
That's true, the first one too.
Yes, and I want to change that and update it and be clear.
Thank you very much for catching that.
Couldn't have told me before I started.
I started. She just realized it. I'm just glad you realized it before we left.
I know.
Any discussion? Russ?
Question. J CJ report, can we attach that to this? We are.
I think we have to, actually.
Okay.
If you select priority one, the replacement or renovation, that, that priority, you have to submit a, a report documenting your claim.
Okay.
So I would, I would submit J CJ, I'd submit the capital list as cleaned up, and I would even submit the, the indoor air quality assessment that was recently completed.
Okay. I do want to add, I think the board of selectmen's input was good input too. So I think it makes sense for us to try to work with them and get a document that everybody can agree on, so.
I agree. I think it was really helpful to meet with them and get their feedback. And I also really want to thank Tom and Marty, because I know you guys have been working so hard at getting all of this done and revising and talking to people and revising again, and it's been a lot of work in a short amount of time and.
A lot of hands involved, yeah.
Yeah, we.
It's a good process.
If I'm missing somebody, Diane?
Diane?
Diane, thank you so much, to all of you.
Principals, Diane McCarthy, yeah.
There's so much hard work that goes on behind the scenes before these things get to us. So thank you. And are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you.
So where, I'm thinking of the timeline to bring this to the select board.
27th?
27th of February, Monday, the 27th. So we would bring it to them and hopefully get a vote of approval, and then I think on that night, are we also presenting our budget?
So, yeah, so the proposal was that Marty would be attending the February 27th meeting and anyone else who'd like to attend. I will not be, I will not be anywhere near Long Meadow that day, so I will not be able to attend, but the understanding with Marie Angeli's is that you would be presenting both on the SOI and the school budget, just in case there are any other questions after our joint meeting. So we can kind of go from there and gauge whether or not we need another joint meeting. Yep. Monday, the 27th.
Do you have a meeting the next day?
We do not have a meeting the, the next day.
So that is just, so Superintendent O'Shea would be presenting basically for us?
Yeah, on, on our behalf, yeah. But if anybody wants to attend and can attend, that'd be great to have people there, because I'll be out of town, I would love to have members there.
I don't know if anybody's available, but. Try.
What time is it?
Seven.
I think it's 7 o'clock, yeah.
We'd have to figure out, obviously we had a quorum show up. You gonna be asking us questions, or?
Right. My first time through in terms of this process, so, you know, you're concerned that if the school committee had a quorum at the select board meeting, is that?
Right.
Then we would have to post it, so I guess Diane will, will query the school committee to see who would be attending on the 27th.
And that would be SOI and budget.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else on that item before we move on to the overnight field trip request? It looks like we have. It looks like we have several.
Are we thinking the board's actually going to vote on the SOIs on the 27th?
I was thinking they would, but, I mean, again, it's not due until April 7th or thereabouts. So if they're not comfortable voting that night, we do have some time.
What do you think, and Russ? Do you want to spend a little more time talking about timeline?
I just don't know about sending Superintendent O'Shea over by himself to present our budget and the SOIs if... That's fine as long as we assume everything's going to go fine. But if it doesn't, you know, so I guess we got to figure out if we can go or not.
Okay. Do, I mean...
It wouldn't have worked last year, let's put it that way.
We can, well...
But this year's a different year.
Yeah, it's very different. I think we have to see how it goes and then decide what we want to do. Does that sound like a plan?
Would you like me to make these motions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just still thinking about what Russ was saying. I think it would be good to have at least somebody from the finance subcommittee there, if that's possible. Because I'm going to be out of town.
I mean, I think I can go.
Okay.
But I don't know if other people want to go because if we do, then we should post if we have more than four people.
Okay.
I don't think they're going to be back either.
Okay.
So if Michelle could go, then we have a quorum of a subcommittee, so we'd have to post that. So Diane, if you could just figure out who can go and then we'll figure out how to post it if we have to.
Would somebody like to read, we're moving on to new business. We have overnight field trip requests that we need to approve. Could somebody volunteer to read the motions, please?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the School Committee approve the preliminary request to secure prices and make arrangements for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Italy and Greece in April of 2018.
Second.
So which one is it?
Japan.
Oh, you read the second one.
Oh, it's a single pager?
You missed the Japan one.
Under 11...
Oh, 11? Yeah, there's a bunch of them.
I'm going to read the rest of them? I think I'm going to do one at a time.
We have to do one at a time.
Wait a second.
This one? Okay.
You read that one. It's okay.
Any...
We'll just do that one next. Does everybody have it?
Any discussion? Is this, this is an annual trip they do?
I'm not following it. What did I do? This is the first one. That's what I read.
Have they done this trip a lot?
I don't think it's annual, but I do think it might be every other year. I think this year they might be going to England. So it might be in every other year that they go to Italy and Greece.
All those in favor of the Japan trip?
No, not Greece and Italy.
They'll go to Italy and Greece first.
I'm confused. Did you, oh, oh, you read the Italy and Greece? You read the Italy and Greece first?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't catch that. Okay. Give me one second.
Oh, it's...
Thanks, thanks. There's so many overnight field trip requests. I've never seen this many at once. Anything we need to know about this trip, Tom or Marty or Diane?
No, they're just submitting it together.
Other than what Tom already said, that I was thinking, why did this have, what did that have to do with Japan?
It's just the preliminary approval. It's just to give them the green light to go out and get some prices and make some arrangements.
Okay, great.
Non-minding.
Okay. All those in favor? Thanks, Marty. Russ, are you in favor?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. So the next motion.
Do you want to do the next one?
Will you? Liz needs a break, I think.
This one's Japan.
Japan.
Okay. I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the School Committee approve the preliminary request to secure prices and make arrangements for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Japan in April 2018.
Anything on this one? All those in favor? Now we have the overnight, overnight field trip requests, okay? Somebody want to read the motion?
All right. I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the School Committee approve the overnight field trip request for students from Long Meadow High School Key Club to travel to Springfield, Massachusetts on March 31st, 2017, through April 2nd, 2017.
I actually have a question on this one. So the other ones, I get the overnight nature of this, but why are we doing an overnight trip to Springfield?
They stay in a hotel. So it's the Key Club.
It's the Key Club and they...
Key Club convention.
There's all kinds of activities that go on in the hotel outside as their conference. It's a statewide conference.
Oh.
Like MASC, okay.
Have they done this before?
MASC, we wouldn't stay.
They've been doing this for years.
They have.
And it's very, it's part of the expiculture and the experience to go and be with their classmates.
Is it typically not in Springfield?
No, it's typically in Springfield.
That was a good question.
I remember this question being asked last year.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
You might have asked it.
I don't think it was me. Guy wouldn't have caught it, probably. I just happened to notice. So what about, shoot, what was it? We allow them to take their own cars, private vehicles? Do you have a policy on that?
Students driving their own private vehicles? I don't know that.
No, it just says...
We have a policy on... No transportation provided and how they get there is outside.
Okay, so some schools say parents and kids cannot drive themselves, stuff like this. We don't have that policy, apparently.
No.
All right.
All those in favor?
All right, next one. I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the School Committee approve the overnight field trip request for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Boston, Massachusetts on March 9th, 2017, through March 11th, 2017.
Second.
And I think that's the band or the chorus group, the music group.
Yeah, I think they're going...
No, this is, this says Symphony Hall. I thought that, I don't know.
Well, Boston, Madison, March 9th, 11th is usually the Music Educators Conference.
It is. It's for the conference.
Okay.
Again, this is something we've done in the past.
Yeah, I remember this. Anything else before we vote? All those in favor?
Okay, I move on the recommendation of Superintendent that the School Committee approve the overnight field trip request for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to England and Belgium on February 18th, 2017, through February 26th, 2017. That's four days from now.
Four days from now?
It's kind of close.
What's the story with that? What's the story with that? Why are we approving...
It would have been approved as a preliminary request at some point.
And it was. It was.
So then it comes back and has a final stage is to approve it with the overnight request trip form. And my thought would be you need these things further in advance.
Yeah.
We did give that feedback to the high school. They're well aware.
Yeah, what's the typical window that we have? It's usually, I mean, some of them are several months in advance. But I think maybe we...
It's supposed to be in the superintendent's office at least 30 days.
Oh, we do have a policy.
Yeah, for overnight field trips. Why this one was delayed, I'm not quite sure.
And this group is, what group is this?
The business.
Business students? Yeah.
Maybe they didn't know, like, everyone was going yet and they didn't have all their money in, so they couldn't make a firm commitment and so...
I just think it's important that we relay the concern because if there is an issue that comes up and they have all their tickets purchased and, you know, I would hate for, to derail something like that, not this trip, but a trip in the future.
Agreed.
Yeah. Thanks, Marty, for just passing that along.
We will reinforce that.
Anything else? All those in favor?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the School Committee approve the overnight field trip request for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Fallmouth, Massachusetts on February 21st, 2017, through February 23rd, 2017.
So again, this one is in the not-too-distant future. This one could not have been foreseen. However, it was a tournament opportunity that only recently became possible, so.
All right. Russ, are you voting? All those in favor? Okay, our next item is suggestions for future agenda items. Stephanie?
I'd like to request that the high school graduation robe colors be placed on the agenda for March 14th meeting.
Okay. Anything else? Is that all you want to say about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll talk about it.
Great.
March 14th.
Any, any other suggestions? March 14th, yeah.
Okay, I move the School Committee adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy as it relates to collective bargaining negotiations with Unit A and to reconvene into open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
A roll call.
Roll call. Thank you, John. Stephanie?
John Fitzgerald, excuse me.
Stephanie Jasmine, aye.
Russell DuPree, aye.
Jess Hutchins, aye.
Aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Okay, so we'll sign off from LCTV and...
Well, we're going to reconvene.
We are going to recon, we have to reconvene, don't we?
Well, that's what I recommend.
Do we have to reconvene, Diane?
Yes.
Yes.
You have to reconvene into open session, whether you want LCTV to hang on and wait. It's up to you guys.
Well, we don't...
Are we coming back to vote for some reason?
Yeah, hopefully.
Okay.
We are.
Voting on, on an item coming out of executive session or...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So hopefully we're off camera.